I'd like to call the August twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of the Fenton Community High School District one hundred board to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Figueroa.
Here.
Hayd.
Here.
Jalwick.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Rizinski.
Here.
Ragel.
Here.
Ting Pao Pong.
Here. We have a quorum. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, please read our Fenton mission beliefs and bison way statements.
Our Fenton mission statement is to cultivate successful passion and power, and to break the level of excellence in our community. Our Fenton belief statement is that passion and power are described in the equalized state of care, welcoming the diversity, equity, inclusion, and equality of our community. School and home collaboration is one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with the state of the art facilities. We infuse social emotional learning into academic and culture to prepare students to focus on responsibility. We immerse students in the Fenton environment experiences. The place in mind, students in those at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, and fulfilling environment where we believe in each other, respect the role of state, continue to be openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. Mary, do we have any public comments tonight?
No one this evening.
Thank you. And we go right to sand for recognitions, then?
Outstanding, and we are enjoying an outstanding spirit week. It is Western Wednesday.[126.11][126.11](Applause) So favorite sports team tomorrow if you're interested, and then, of course, bison gear on Friday. So, but tonight, we're going to recognize our AP Take Five students. We have twenty-two top scores. We don't have people present here tonight, but we wanted to just emphasize how important this is. We want to celebrate their efforts. Obviously, these students scored a five on their advanced placement exams, and they obviously earned college credit with a qualifying score, but a five is actually the highest score. And so we want to acknowledge these students here tonight. So here we have our pictures, and you, yep, you can see the, the names.
Amazing.
And actually, yeah, two students had multiple fives.
All right, only?
Yeah.
Is it possible?
Uh, no, not five, but I think we gave them some extras. Right, right.
That's a, it's on the basketball team, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Only, yeah.
And some of these kids are coming back this year, obviously, so we're really excited for what they're going to score this school year also. So, thank you.
Very good.
Then we get to information, informationals, right?
Sure. First, we assume that in reference, we need us to, we obviously, give a board and our audience our enrollment numbers as of this week. So this one's a plus of fifteen, going both directions. The E L. fourteen sixty-seven, the A S. high is fourteen eighty. So, twenty twenty-two school year, twenty twenty-three school year, right here in front of you, the blue side on the folks on the blue. Ninth graders are three hundred and eighty-eight, tenth graders three hundred and seventy-five, eleventh graders three thirty-two, and our seniors at three seventy-two. Pretty big freshman class. As long as we haven't seen that quite that number that day in the line, a total of fourteen sixty-seven. I was just going over to the left, and the orange, the total last year was fourteen twenty. This is about normal prior to the pandemic, the fourteen sixty-five, fourteen seventy-five, fourteen eighty. So glad to see that number, uh, numbers are up this year. In regards to E L., looking at the blue, and E L. staff for English learners, there's three hundred and thirty-eight students, special students with I E Ps, two oh eight, homeless students twenty-four, low income. This is this one in fact. Folks are still turning in their free reduced lunch forms. We're at sixty-eight, uh, sixty-eight-one, free lunch, six twenty-five, and reduced lunch, fifty-five. In regards to more demographics, someone concentrated on the blue, and T L Cs that are transition, uh, transition learning centers in downtown Fenton, that are holding students, um, matriculating there. Up by, by four from last year, T C. as you know, recording that program, and this person wants to see that program in many, many of our parents' community as well. Last year, at forty-four, T C. this year has the E C. article, it's like, you should do have a, it's such a rich, uh, program. How, how we place meeting, basically, specialized algorithms is thirty-eight, this equals T L C., which is another, uh, published, uh, papers. In regards to AP courses, this is the first year, eight, with little ones of AP or, that are open for entries.
AP Computer Science Principles.
Okay. Glad to see.
Mm-hmm.
Want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, we, it's a course that's open to ninth through twelfth graders, but this is the first time at Fenton High School that we have allowed freshmen to take an AP course. So it's really exciting. Normally, AP World was their entrance sophomore year, so this year we have twenty-five. One of our new teachers, D J. Carroll, is teaching that and already doing a great job.
And a shout out to Kate for our AP boot camp this summer where we did have freshmen coming in to learn the basics of what it takes to be in an AP class.
And those are the expectations for our admissions. Glad to see that some zero last year, twenty-five this year. Tenth graders ninety-one, eleventh graders one hundred and seventy-eight, a big boom there, and our seniors at two oh one, a total of four ninety-five compared to four eighty-four last year. Kate, is this the biggest we've had since you've known AP, four and eighty, four and ninety-five since?
I think we've been pretty consistent, you know, over four seventy-five. I think that's been the consistent number, I would say, for probably the last five years. There might have been a dip during the pandemic.
There is a dip in seventh grade. Do you know why?
Um, it's a smaller class. Our sophomore class, I believe, is the smallest class, so I think that probably has something to do with that. Um, yeah, other than that, maybe just an anomaly, but I think it's because it's a smaller class.
What's the criteria for a ninth grader to take an AP class coming in? Was there recommendations from?
Yeah, normally that recommendation, so, and a lot of this is going to have to do with their counselor. So depending on, you know, if, if a kid's recommended for maybe a lower level course and says, I want to take AP Computer Science, they might say, well, let's wait until sophomore year. But if the kid's already going to be in an accelerated math class and wants to take Computer Science, I think they would say, yeah, go ahead and give him a shot. So that'll be something we'll have to examine and see. This is our first shot this year, so we'll see how that goes.
Moving on here real quick, the August enrollment total numbers, T C. from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, consistent, as we know, twenty, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, this pandemic year, there was a dip there, really strong there in four sixty-seven. We'll know in about a month or two, our, our statewide enrollment for the rest of the year. So we're over here, just wanted to give that a moment. So we're going to dig in a little deeper here. In regards to demographic, we're going to talk about our E L. students a little bit. We ha, we have Lorenzo Rubio, our new E L. division leader here, asking to do a video, as well as our special ed. director, do a video to talk a little bit, dig a little deeper about their, their students and their markets. So this one is E L. to do.
Hi, my name is Lorenzo Rubio, Fenton's new multilingual division leader, here to walk you through two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three data on our E L. learners. Here's a chart that maps the total number of students we have at Fenton compared to E L. students. You can see we have one thousand four hundred and sixty-three students at the time of this presentation. Three hundred and forty-one of them are E L. active, E L. students. When you compare the historical trends, you can see that the, these numbers are on the rise. In fall of twenty fifteen, sixteen, we had just about seven percent of the population E L. This year, it's gone up from seven point eight four percent in twenty fifteen to nearly a quarter, twenty-three point three one percent this fall. So in total, the summary of the data, three hundred and forty-one students are active E L. E L.s. We have twelve parent refusals within that population. Six of our E L. students have five oh four plans. We have ninety-six E L. students with I E Ps. Thirty-three of our students are newcomers, meaning they've, have less than one year in the country. We have ten students who exited the program last year through their access scores, and forty-four former or exited E L. students, although the number may be higher since we don't record data on students who have exited more than three years ago. To celebrate our diversity, our E L. community is predominantly Hispanic Latino at eighty-three percent, but you can see we, we have other ethnicities comprising our, our community as well. Our greatest growth within the Hispanic Latino subgroup is Guatemalan students over the past few years. If you look at our data by language spoken, you can see that Fenton is truly a multilingual and multicultural school. There are a total of fifteen different languages spoken by students in our program. Here they are listed in order of prevalence with Spanish, Polish, and Ukrainian at the top. In terms of strengths and opportunities for our program, there's a number of things that we, we have in place and we can continue to get better in. The seal of bilinguality is a great opportunity for our students. Dual language pathways, dual language programming has begun at District Two and Seven that feed into our school. Continue to increase our E L. endorsed staff, although we have an amazing high number of endorsed staff already. We look forward to presenting on some cultural celebrations throughout the year that celebrate our diversity, and look forward to implementing some social emotional supports for both our E L. students and their teachers. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me, Lorenzo Rubio, at Rubio at Fenton one hundred dot org, or my number in the office is six three zero two three eight four seven one eight.
Next one is our students with writing piece presented by Richard Watts.
Good evening. My name is Richard Watts. I'm the special education director, and I'm here to present some special education enrollment numbers for Fenton High School. I have the numbers from last year as well as the numbers from this year, so you can compare. So our, our total number of special education students at Fenton High School in the year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two was one hundred and eighty-six. This coming school year, we have one hundred and seventy-one students currently enrolled, and of those ninety-six are, of those ninety-six students have I E P. and E L. services together. Our transition program through N E D Sec, the Learning Center, currently had thirteen students, whereas last year we had ten students in that program, and that houses students up to the age of twenty-three and prepares them for the workforce and/or transitioning for a future beyond high school. Our Fenton students currently attending Lincoln Academy or N E D Sec, we can, I have, through N E D Sec, we have five students currently, whereas we had four students last year. Our privately placed students who have more needs are currently accounting for sixteen students, whereas last year we had seventeen students in those programs. Our academic life skills program through N E D Sec at our building currently houses nine students, which is the same as last year. This has been an overview of the special education numbers. Please reach out to me if you have any questions, and have a good evening.
This one wasn't on my slide, but I don't know what happened to that slide. So a total for this school year is fourteen sixty-nine, one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine, nine hundred and seventy-two are educated as Latino, three hundred and sixty-five Caucasian, thirty-five African Americans, thirty-five Hispanic Asian, and thirty-nine H. two, or more racist. I don't get that stuff, but they are for, or, next up here is teaching and learning.
All right. So I'm just going to give you a little overview of the presentation that we made to the teachers on the first day of the institute day. So this really kind of sets the stage for us, helps the teachers and the vision leaders know, you know, really where our arrows are pointing for this coming year. So when, um, the word really for this year is coherence, and there's a couple of reasons for that. So I think one of the things that you have heard over and over again the past couple of years is personalization, and that is something that made Fenton so successful throughout this unstable period of COVID. I think the fact that we had been focusing on personalized learning, meeting students where they're at, so much focus on technology, that really allowed us to, I'm not going to say easily, but we were able to transition into online learning and still meet the needs of our students. So that was something that was so important to us. Because of the pandemic, I think we were personalizing, and even with our teacher teams, our P L Cs were able to kind of figure out what was the most important things kids needed to know during the period of COVID. Too much personalization can go a little bit too far, so we really need to bring that back together and make sure that we have some coherence. And that's now that we're all in the building, things are at the new normal, so we're really focusing in three areas with coherence, our curriculum, our grading, and then, as you've heard for the past couple of board meetings, M T S S., our multi-tiered systems of support. So to me, when I was thinking about this, if you have too much personalization, everybody's kind of doing their own thing, right? But you don't know what everybody's getting. If you have too much coherence, you know what everybody's getting, but they might, might not be getting what they need. So we really need to balance this out for equity, right? So to work on both of those things. So we're going to continue to work on both. So with personalized learning, we're going to continue, we have our instructional coaches who are doing that, working with our teachers on Monday, early, late starts. We also have professional development that our teachers and our staff are going to continue. As far as coherence, we're really focusing more on regular department meetings. That's something to make sure that everyone is on the same page, that English one knows what English two is doing, getting back in line. Curriculum mapping, making sure that our courses, everyone knows what are the, the performance assessments, things like that. Continuing to talk about the grading committee and making sure our grading practices are standardized. And as I highlighted in a couple of board meetings ago, student learning committee, having student voice in there. So all of those things are going to help us can bring that coherence into our learning. The other, one of our main focus, Jason Madel, is heading up M T S S., multi-tiered systems of support. The staff has really reacted well to this. We have many supports at Fenton, but really to look at them in the systemic way and make sure that our students are getting what they need, and also that the teachers get what they need so that they can support students no matter where they fall on those different tiers. So we're making sure that we support students academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally, and then also with attendance has been a big push. So Jason shared this before, but just again to highlight, what we're really focusing on this year are the areas that are highlighted in blue. Those are some of our supports that maybe were in place but need to be touched up more. And so those are really the areas that we're focusing in on. Jason put out a call for teachers to join the M T S S. Plus Committee, which is what he's calling it, that'll have teachers involved, and he's gotten overwhelming support. So it's, this is really going well. Another aspect of our M T S S. is just our approach to discipline, which I'm sure you've heard this before, but continuing to explore and implement restorative practices. One of the things that we know is that this can't just be done in the dean's office, or it can't be that teachers are disciplining students one way in the classroom. So we're really looking at ways to continue community building throughout classes and making sure that when students do run into trouble, that it's not just discipline. There certainly is an accountability there, but also that they're repairing the harm that was done. So making sure that we have both of those levels in our discipline practices. And then finally, I think one of the things that we brought back this year that was super successful was our first week of school. We used our bison time to bring down class level assemblies. So on Tuesday, we had all the seniors come down, and we really set the stage for them as far as, we're so happy you're back, this is what you can expect from the year, and this is what we expect from you. So Sam did a great job of heading those off. This is, these were his major messages, that we want kids to be leaders, attendance is important, we can't help you unless you are here, and so we need you here and we want you here. We're also really pushing kids to get involved. We know the more connected they are to the school, either to leaders in the school, adults, or their peers. So that's another big push for us, and then also encouraging kids to get involved in the principal's advisory. So again, the kids liked them, the teachers liked them. It was a really, really good way to set the stage for the year. And then finally highlighting something that's going to be coming up, October is anti-bullying month, so we will be really highlighting Be a Force for Good, which is our Fenton bullying program. We're going to be doing that through bison time, assemblies, different outreach programs with kids, but we, that was one of the big messages of our class meetings was that bullying doesn't happen at Fenton. And so we're going to give the kids the tools to make sure that they know what to do when, if it does occur, and that we're there to support them. So Jason will have more on that in the future, but it's very exciting that we're going to be focusing on that.
Do you guys think that happens?
I don't think overwhelmingly, but I think, you know, I, I think we see nationally, it's on the rise everywhere, right? Especially, a lot of it maybe doesn't happen in our walls, right? It's some of the stuff that happens outside with social media and things like that. So we want to make sure we're educating our kids on all of those levels that, you know, what to do when they have this problem, who they can go to for help.
What are the schools' options or recourse when it happens outside of here, but eventually when you come back here, it's all kind of firestone to?
Right. We, well, usually, if you can, if there's some sort of nexus to the school, like, let's say, there's a disruption in the school, or kids are talking in the school, then, then we, we can get involved discipline-wise, but typically, it's just FYI, here's some information that's come in, this is what's out there. So we, we look into it, investigate it. If there is a tie to the school environment, then, then we can act on it, or just sort of be aware and try to be preventative before anything does happen in the school. So, yeah, it hap, it happens. I mean, parents, a lot of times, it's parents like, hey, I saw this, I want to make sure people know about it and are aware of it.
That's it.
Actually, there's a building, Reverend Hay, we're running up, ready for number eight question, on the side of the educational campaign committee. I'm going to quickly open this slide, it's the same slide, but I think it's fair for you to see it again, so you know we can present out there to you on the same page. Oh, there's a change, change in public pictures, or I know we got feedback, Alok showing more of the building, you know, she had a section more of the bathroom, the flooding, and all that, so we could consider it as a similar one. Number two was, Alok, we have a lot of therapists, and a commission of ten million dollars that the district will contribute to the referendum, also here in tax, uh, in tax national, so. So I'll go to a point here, this is basically our lead slide here, that we are very successful, some new slides there, but we have one nation behind the space in our each school. (Inaudible) the industry that's on the part, it has its end being a split, our passion for the burners are small, and I'm there, but more than we just there, and we'll touch pictures. Spirit needs improvement, but we can go in short here, that is, um, in the fight, and the cause of, especially, that's on paper about editorial, which are our tennis court, and our okay, our life, both of them. The, 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 along with graduation, and all of this other stories.
I would say nauseous smell instead of notorious.
Right, nauseous, right.
I mean.
Yeah, certainly, it worked.
Because.
They all of this, all their students can teach us back in academic session, regulations inside, and our case is served, as you can see here, this generation, because we're, this referendum is really about future generations, so it's, 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 for all our bodies to talk, isn't, you know, the dream, the school, their parents should be very excited to still, uh, that's why our community came together and, uh, as a community engagement process over the last, past, uh, past year, we had, it was over sixteen weeks. Okay? And so, you're so prepared, that's why I should say, the original, uh, June twenty-eight referendum, uh, was hundred and twenty-nine, it's up to ninety-nine, and that last, uh, there, so we have, and by cost, we actually need to show this, and then, you know, so it's. The ninety-nine million community driven plan is to, uh, modernize and expand, like a high school, will now appear on our ballot to improve voting, and that will be, I'll see what's rest, and we're, and we, and we'll, our whole family, we'll run places, and that.
James?
Yes.
How about the ninety-nine million community driven and ten million from our reserves?
District reserves.
The district reserves. I, I, I mean, if we're hearing what the people are saying, we need to emphasize, if that was part of the feedback, we can't keep saying ninety-nine. It's ninety-nine plus ten, and I think that's another point we really need to emphasize. Yeah, ninety-nine through taxes, ten million from our reserves for a hundred and nine million dollar project.
Yes, sir. Here's a page here, where, um, they're flooring, those back, and seeing water, what they're, they're just waiting.
Where in the building is that?
No, she's saying, where is? (Laughter)
I got your back, Patty. We're good. It's in the back by the training room.
(Inaudible) our trainers, uh, floor locker room, or else, right?
All around the edge of the field, out the doors.
I was here for the election, and that was the primary election, and it was, you know, it was kind of, it's kind of, kind of rough and embarrassing to let people in and out those doors from the gymnasium down there.
Pretty much the north end of the building.
Yeah. A little more with our, our program, career learner spaces. This is a nice picture of what we have in the beginning. We will able to modernize and strengthen our passion for future generations, that's what I'm talking about. With a group and safe facilities, our students will feel better. And here's the community plan, once again, pictures of our consumers, and just, uh, can we plan this now, or run for it?
Again, I'd make that same change to that slide, too, ninety-nine plus tax for a hundred and nine.
But it isn't, yeah.
Well, I guess that one makes sense, yeah, because we're saying the impact would be two eighty-five. Okay, never mind. I said corrected.
And we will move on to the valid question. So folks should see it in the presentation.
Thank you.
And here are some work, collection of information, and some activities, we have four town hall meetings there, starting in September, we don't know what it's up to the second. Uh, but a information about interest requests, and a, how to register, and, and again, these are our future, these are futures we want for our children to pass right now, as you guys know, among the great processes that comes. And our kids deserve the same opportunity to provide by the district, to pay each, I mean, there, there are, we okay, but all this and most of that, it's sort of knowing how to pay, okay, this is what it's trying to.
Hmm.
Can you, um, go back for one?
And if I present this to attendees, so, I'm going to add a, two more of our communication next one.
Carrie asked to go back one.
I mean, just that, this isn't, just noting that it's, it's an investment in the community, but it's, it's a personal investment, or, I guess more personal, it's an investment in your home value, it's a long time value on your home, just be honest, because if Fenton doesn't maintain and continue to advance on, families get to eighth grade and look, looking to go elsewhere.
Yeah.
It's very interesting, you said that last year, the nineteen seventy-five, and the house party, it's, right, I think by a lot, you know, with the, by the houses, that was just sold by the, you know, or they were, they, the, 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 the selling prices, so, like we just said, very, uh, that, it doesn't, it's.
Those were the last houses to sell. They kind of had them over the barrel. I don't think that's a good average for the community, though. Let's be realistic. Those were the people who refused to sell, and they had the buyers where they wanted them.
My point is, sorry, nineteen seventy-five, houses in nineteen seventy-five. My point is, sorry, nineteen seventy-five, houses in nineteen seventy-five.
I don't disagree, huge difference there, but let's not throw out, we have nine hundred thousand dollar home values right now, because most homes aren't. And then you're going to enter that in the calculator and then we just shot ourselves in the foot. Let's be realistic, I mean, it's all based on your tax bill, not what you feel your house is worth, what your house is valued at.
We're going to use that next time. That's the slide there. And we came over to the brochure for the two, uh, for the November eighth, uh, election, to be Spanish English. Just a, kind of like a, a two pager of what the referendum talked about. And then Rick explained the, I guess, maybe of Rick, what goes to him.
Yeah, I wanted to feature Rob, because we had to do a lot of trial and error with this. I mean, he was on vacation, he had to look at the idea, and it's a great idea. So as you see here, that's a sample tax ballot, and we have highlighted the area that, uh, homeowners should look at. I have a disclaimer above this, and then right below it, that says, your taxes, um, are based on a value that the assessor decides. And what your house sells for is a price decided by two individual parties based on several circumstances, and that is not what your taxes are actually based on. So they cannot see their average or any of the calculations until they type into the orange box. And once they hit submit, the rest of the calculator plops down. And I've also programmed it, so if they click on the sample, or they want to zoom in on it, it automatically opens in a new screen at a larger resolution. So it's, before they get there, it's in bold and italics. Look at what the assessor's decided your, your value is worth, and then at the bottom, it says the same thing. So they kind of, they have to see this and read it three times before they actually type it in.
Can't make it anymore.
Yeah.
I, I just had, so they have to go to the assessor's site to get their assessed values.
Or go, look at their tax bill, yeah. So you, you can.
Try to duplicate off of there, yeah.
Yeah, you can get it on their website, but what you have sold your house for, or what you're trying to sell your house for,
is not the, is not the number, right.
You get your tax bill once a year though. So, uh, was it twice? That's right, it's twice a year.
Amongst all the, uh, other revisions to the website, that was one of the big ones. And also I threw on there, um, the average home values from the United States Census Bureau. I mean, that's probably the most calls I got from people, and it's the easiest thing to verify. You go on Google and you just look at the towns and they actually tell you what the average is, so. Uh, those were the, the two things, was how determine and who determined the average.
If you, um, when you guys are choosing photos for this, I'm sure this is probably an early version. If you're doing it to identify the deficiencies, they need to be obvious and not have to search for five minutes to figure out what's wrong with the photo. On first glance, some of them appear like, okay, what's wrong with this? Just, just a point.
Yeah, I mean, like, picture, the first one, which is that Mr. Weiss, was, uh.
Mr. Hatrea. Hatrea.
I mean, I think there may be some other signs, picture in there. To, like, Kerry's point, was, what's wrong with this?
That picture is basically, that is, uh, a description that our students are applying. We're going to do what we have. And the two pictures on top of there is just basically the enforcement. Agent building for regulation. Who do you want to showcase this for us? We're going to use that one, uh, while it's working out.
When it comes to the brochure?
Yes.
The best value is the photos. And after that, that's what's going to make people read the rest of it. So, it may be a great photo when it's blown up, but when it's small, it kind of loses its effectiveness. The word stand out, but the photo, the photo doesn't.
Sure.
So it's just something to consider when you're using photos, it has to.
Photos say.
Acceptive, no other explanation to help with our cause, and really what you're trying to get across.
Right, with a caption as well.
Yeah.
I, I would have liked to have seen some, uh, after photos, or, you know, like what we're proposing it to be.
Before and after.
Yeah, that I would have liked to, you know.
Right, we have that during, Sylvia, we have that during our presentation in the town hall meetings.
And, and these are going out to?
Uh, we're going to pass that out to open house tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
And they will hear the presentation that I just presented this evening as well.
And, and that locker room, it doesn't look terrible here. That locker room.
That locker room.
Unless you know that that thing is the shower, isn't it?
Well, I know that thing's the shower, and I.
If you're, if you're claustrophobic, or, or just partially, you go to the locker room, you start feeling it right away.
Well, but the picture doesn't.
Oh, sure.
You don't. And some of us, this is what we grew up with, so, but I, I, when the lights aren't working, I mean, I'm just saying, yeah, we have to, it, it just, to me, it's like, wow, it's clean, the lockers are painted, it's blue and orange. Yeah, that's the shower, what's, what's the problem with this picture? Honestly, at a glance, to me, what's wrong with this picture? Oh, you have to shower with other people, well, anybody who was in the service is like, yeah, so what's your point? So, I'm sorry, you know, and then from what I've been told, none of my children have ever used the shower here, which to me is. You got your, you got your towel thrown at you when you were marching in that shower, and I don't say that's a good thing, but, you know.
It's all good feedback.
Picture on the floor.
That makes up all of it, that should be on the first page, that should be the first thing they see.
No, that's good feedback, yeah, yep. All right, so just real quick, some upcoming events, town hall meetings are those dates, we'll, we'll put that out in the community. We have open house tomorrow, we'll also have, uh, have another go at it during parent conferences, which is in October, and we have a Kermess coming up on the twenty-fourth. Let me see, next one is basically, I do this, try to do this every year for the board, for upcoming events and topics for the board, and we did this per quarter, we did this last year. So from July and September, I'll just go through this quickly, is the welcome back, student demographics, tentative budget, public hearing, uh, some of the, uh, board policies and, and finance, uh, meetings are also up there, and final approval of the budget. Then the next quarter, October to December, estimated tax levy, a lot of finances here, tax levy final, uh, the annual financial report, shared services report, our triple I meeting or joint meeting. Course catalog, uh, car, course catalog will be presented to the board, Shape of Wooddale, which is November first, um, our fall meeting with Illinois Associated School Board, and perhaps a board policy meeting and a finance meeting. Then through January through March, big ticket items are the draft and approval of the school calendar for the following year, authorizing preparedness publication for the tentative budget, superintendent evaluation, approval of staff planning for the following year or FTEs, extended employment with who's going to work during the summer, salary adjustment for admin at will and bus drivers. So this gives you a flavor, year after year, it's the same sort of theme, you've seen this before, I just want to make sure we're prepared for it for this upcoming school year. And lastly, uh, for the fourth quarter, April through June, approval of the board calendar, student code of conduct, IHSA member renewal, this starting to ring a bell, and school treasurer appointment, net sec agreement, consumable materials and so forth. So, I'd just like to remind the board, hey, look, it's cyclical, these are the things that you will see over and over again, so nothing is as much of a surprise. Graduations on that last one, higher resignation. And for our veterans here, you've seen this, at least there are three or four cycles already. Important dates for the board, uh, Wednesday, September fourteenth, which is approximately two and a half weeks from now, we have our retreat. Uh, we have a cover booster event on the twenty-third of, uh, of September, September twenty-fourth, we have the Kermess. Home football game, September thirtieth, fall play is on, uh, October twentieth to the twenty-second, fall play. Twenty-fourth. Ker- Kermess is what we had in the, um, the auditorium, uh, the Latino celebration.
Okay, what we had outside?
The one we had outside, we're doing that again for Latino Heritage Month.
What is the big cross-country meet?
Cross-country meet is September third. And that's called, um, early. Early bird, cross-country tournament. Uh, fall due page, uh, division dinner me- meeting is on November second, general election is on November eighth, November eighteen to twentieth, twentieth is our triple I conference, and on February first, we've got the spring due page division dinner, uh, meeting. That should all be in your calendar, we will put it up there, Mary, uh, we'll invite it electronically, so you don't have to write it down. It should be there already. Uh, Fenton Educational Foundation, just really quickly, uh, this is one of our strategic plan two point O goals. Our goal is to start our own foundation, um, we're working with our legal, Klein, Thorpe and Jenkins, uh, to help us with the paperwork. The goal is for December is to be a tax exempt, uh, foundation, so a lot of paperwork to be there. Our team right now consists of the planning, the logistics, the paperwork and so forth, is myself, Bruce Martin, Michelle Papa Nicolau, uh, Rick Cambic and Jose Hamarello. ONC special meeting, very, very happy with the fly, uh, the fly quiet recommendation, once again, as a recommendation. Fenton is one of nineteen school district that participated, I believe there were forty-three towns around O'Hare that was also part of this. It's basically, what this focus is all about, is basically balance or equity and fairness of where the planes take off and land, okay? So there's a rotation, so it's not always in Bensonville or Wooddale area. The current plan is, is, um, is outdated, it was, um, it was constructed in nineteen ninety-seven, and it's twenty twenty-three, so there's a good, uh, close to, uh, thirty years, um, so it had to be revised. So once again, this is just a recommendation from a, a committee, um, this will go to the Chicago Department of Aviation, or CDA, for review, and then if they like it, it will go to the FAA, which is the Federation Aviation Administration.
So, so you sent that to us, you forwarded on that email to us, but what, what's, is there anything different than what's already, I mean, they're already rotating, but?
They're, they're going to rotate it more evenly.
Okay.
They're rotating it right now, it's not the way the plan we would like it to be. So there's more equity and balance, so it's not just going through Elmer's, Bensonville and Wooddale. The other towns around O'Hare are, are sharing the cost of the noise impact.
Just the number of lanes, I mean, uh, lanes they have now has increased tremendously since nineteen ninety-seven, and so it, this just makes sense.
Well, actually, they had the same number of runways, but they reconfigured them to where they're all east-west runways, and they're, they're getting better at it, but unfortunately, what happens is if the wind doesn't agree with them, then they always hold the right to switch due to weather and other things. I mean, it's great in theory, but they're always going to do what they're going to do.
They're still in north-south, isn't there?
Hmm, they tore them all out.
There's a diagonal, there's one diagonal.
They were supposed to remove them all.
Right.
Because the cross-traffic on the other runways cut down their.
We focus on the west sides.
And in north and south, we're all supposed to go.
Any, um, sound mitigation at all, or?
For the buildings? There, there is a program for residents that they, they could reach out to with the noise pollution, right, with, with new windows and stuff.
They're doing so right now in Wooddale.
Right.
The houses that missed and in a new configuration.
Yeah, and then, you know, after twenty, thirty-some years, um, the community's changed, right, the geography's changed, you've had other development, so. I'm sure the committee's looking at that, uh, to reconfigure it differently, to, to accommodate the new communities or the, the already gone communities. I would imagine, does that sound right, John, I mean, you'd probably.
Oh, don't get me started, because I was in, I was in, I was in, there was no money, then we got money, oh wait, we restructured, you're no longer in, thank you very much.
Okay.
So ten years of not doing windows turned into a much bigger bill for me.
Right.
Was not a good phone call.
And, and for the board to know, um, Bruce and I go onto the website, and if there's any grant in regards to noise mitigation, our name, Fenton High School is on there. Um, last, last chunk of grant that we got was, when was that, Bruce? We weren't here, obviously.
The noise abatement?
Yeah.
Probably twenty years.
Twenty years, so.
Yeah.
We, we just want to be on the list, that's just trying to be proactive, so there is a menu where you could, you know, state who you are, your organization, and if there are.
Schools were on the front end of the abatement.
Correct.
And they finally moved into the residential.
So more on that, let's see what happens, uh, that was good hard work there. Uh, in regards to, um, FOIA's, we have three, smart procurement, we do that, um, every quarter, and we received two referendum, uh, FOIA's, um, one for EO Sullivan, and the other one is cost and expenses, all three has been resolved.
James, is EO Sullivan requesting something, or are people asking about EO's?
Correct, people are asking about.
That was the point of clarification I need, thank you.
Yep, people are asking about EO Sullivan, and they're asking about the cost and expenses. Okay, yep, yep, we go to the consent agenda, thank you, James, for the informational. Do we have any questions, comments about the consent agenda?
Bless you.
Mary, I do want to inform you, um, Juliet wasn't feeling well.
I have it recorded, thank you.
Patty, we're going through the consent agenda, do you have any questions, comments on it?
Can we get on the financial part? Who are we checking for residency verification in like twenty-six?
I could answer this one. Um, every year, um, we hire an organization to check on residency, to make sure students who live in our district are the students that come here and the students who are not, there's sometimes fraud. Uh, so when we get, for example, I'll give you one example, if we, we sent out something, a couple of packages or letters to a home, and it comes back to us, that's a red flag, so that organization investigates that.
And DEI National Conference, who went to that? Was that, was that you? No.
DEI.
No, DEI, DEI National Conference, um.
That, those are our business teachers, um, Rich Weiss and.
I don't know what it was, because it sounded.
Yeah, we can, yeah, I, I believe Louis Garcia went, are, one of our new business teachers, so, yeah.
I could get that free.
Report back.
So how would we go?
Yeah, yeah, because I, I mean, it was a vocational thing, and, um, yeah, it sounds, it, the, it sounds like a cool thing, I just. Are we a civil defense shelter?
Civil defense.
I don't think any of those exist anymore, Patty, they, I really don't. That went out of, civil defense was replaced by ESDA, was replaced by CERT. Um, I don't think any of those exist anymore. The signs are all down, the rations are, even for rations, we're all, they're all just, it's all.
Like an emergency, like, like, would we be utilized as?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Like, for, go ahead, Bruce.
I think we are a designated, um, site for, you know, a disaster of some sort.
Yeah, like if some kind of.
And we, that's coordinated with the county, and, yeah.
As you know, we practice, John, you know this, if there was a plane accident, we are a hub, uh, to assist with that, or if there's an outbreak, a virus outbreak, uh, our school is a base for that. We are also a relocation, uh, shelter, let's say something happens at Taoga, and all those kids have to go somewhere because of an emergency or an explosion or a fire or something, they would come here as a relocation, and in return, we use their school as well, so we, taxing bodies try to help each other.
Actually, that came up from the policy, I was reading on the board, and that's, I just wrote that down. And the computers, is that in the consent agenda or is that?
That is, that, that's the next one, discussion action item.
That's next.
That's next, um, as far as going back to that civil defense, um, shelter, how does that work? So is that a fallout for nuclear holocaust?
When it was originally designed, it was all during the Cold War.
Yeah.
Cuban Missile Crisis, there were signs in the cities, signs in the Chicago Public Schools.
Sure, right.
They had designated rations they were issued, radiation monitors. I actually have one of the old radiation monitors, it's like just a display from one of my hazmat days, they were throwing it away, it's like, no, I'll take it, it's, it's a piece of history. So, yeah, none of that really exists anymore in that capacity, it's all been upgraded now to.
Zombie apocalypse.
Weather emergencies, relocation shelters, but the supplies from the federal government stopped, I think in the seventies. But I have to.
That goes way back, Patty. I wasn't even born yet.
It was something I read in the board policy, we have to share that that.
It was one of the footnotes at that, I'm just kidding. So may I have a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Leo, and roll call, please.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Jalawick?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Riddzinski?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes, motion passed. Uh, let's get to this, the discussion items, start with, um, the student staff laptops. Doctor Batson?
Sorry, a bit of multitasking. Um, this is, uh, unfortunately, the only, uh, action item beyond the consent agenda. Uh, this is a, a group of, um, desktop. This is a group of desktops and laptops, primarily desktops. They're student machines that we've been planning to do later in the year, but because of the timing on the ESAR funds and trying to close out ESAR one, the deadline is the end of this month. So we just basically moved the purchase of these up. We'll probably still deploy them later in the year, but we wanted to make sure that we took advantage of the ESAR funds that were available and didn't lose that opportunity. So these were things, again, we've been planning to replace and are just moving that schedule up.
I, where is, there's fifty-six. I mean, like, how, I saw a lot of computers, where are you going?
It's basically two classrooms worth. We have three, these are primarily back in the career and technical area, so there's certain software that doesn't run on the Chromebooks, and they need additional horsepower to run, like CAD systems and things like that. So the systems that are back there, that these are actually replacing and enhancing those areas. We have some older machines in those classrooms, not enough for every student to use at the same time. So we thought this was a really good opportunity to help their learning by expanding what's available to them and improving what's available to them in those two classrooms.
Do the systems run CAD?
These aren't necessarily going to run CAD. There's a lighter version of CAD, but we're not doing that this semester, I don't know if we're doing next semester. But there are things like that, that are unique tools, that maybe something that runs a 3D printer or something like that, some additional tools that just aren't available on the Chromebook, that we typically use a computer, a regular Windows computer for. We're actually shrinking the footprint too, because the ones they have back there are these big old clunky, and these are going to be very small, so they'll be portable, be able to roll around in a room and move around.
And those are the ThinkBooks?
The ThinkBooks are upgrading a laptop cart that has been neglected for quite a while, so that teachers can check that out and use it for specialty things. We're thinking computer science, some of those things where they do need some additional horsepower again there, or tools that aren't necessarily available on a Chromebook. So it's actually replacing and upgrading a laptop cart.
A little bit off-topic, you know, it's been kind of weighing on my mind as far as our technology goes. We have hack mitigation, all that stuff, right? I mean, we've got countermeasures in place if we get hacked, and as far as our technology here, our IT.
Security.
Yeah, security, security, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a lot of answers to that. Some that I'd probably not want to say on a live stream, that we could actually, you know, if anyone's interested, we could actually do a closed session on that. We did about four years ago, I want to say, we, because we had, at that point in time, upgraded. But we've done a significant amount of work in terms of protecting our systems, protecting our end-users, protecting our data, and continue to do that. We're trying to follow all the best practices the best we can.
Thank you.
You have to watch out for the APs here.
You ask around, and it's typically, you know, every other problem that somebody runs into, it's usually a student.
I could just tell the board, Jim and his crew are diligent in protecting our software and are protecting our students from the outside.
We were talking ESAR money, how much of this is going to be ESAR money, or is it all ESAR money? And this is all meets the parameters, so really...
Yeah, we double-check that, yeah.
Honestly revenue-neutral to us because of the way the ESAR funds came in.
Exactly.
John, do you want some chairs to come along with that?
I don't know if we can get that on ESAR, but if we can, I'm in favor of it, I'll vote right now.
We good today? Okay, so may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the purchase of fifty-six Dell Optiplex 3080 Miko desktop computers and thirty-seven Lenovo ThinkBook 14S laptop computers from CDW G for the total amount of seventy-three thousand three hundred and six dollars from ESAR funds.
So move, spec it, I defer to Sylvia.
And, Mary, could I get a roll call?
Hayde?
Yes.
Jalowick? Louis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes. Okay, motion move or passed? Let's get to committee reports, starting with the Bensonville Foundation. The co-chair's not here, so Sylvia, you're at Bensonville Community Foundation, anything going on?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. The DI Committee, that's you and I, nothing new right now. Finance report, facilities, you guys, gentlemen?
No, nothing to report, we're moving along, and I'm sure more will follow.
Great, and then the ISB delegate, that's me, and... I do have something. The annual committee, the membership committee, you guys got that, so that's coming up. And just, I forget what, hang on.
Membership coordinator?
Yeah, yeah, what dates were those, was that like...
The fall meeting date?
November second.
Yes.
So, yeah, that's the due page division meeting coming up, so make sure we can attend. And then triple I, so we went through that. Next is Lend.
Nothing to report.
Netsec?
We had a meeting on the eighth, and actually, it was the first meeting of the year. And usually, we went for the insurance renewals, financial reports, and also, we accept the resignation of the director, and also, the committee was selected to look for the new director.
And just to chime in there, Leo is going to be the president again for two straight years, just want to give him an acknowledgement of that. And I've been selected to be part of the committee to look for the director, so there's going to be more work for us there.
Great representation, you guys, from Fenton. And Board Policy, we had this earlier, Patty, do you want to fill us in on anything?
Just a quick summary.
Quick summary, yeah.
I'm going to defer to Jose, he said so.
Okay.
Sure, so we, we are going to accept all the recommendations except for one, and we're going to review that at our next board meeting. I don't know, do you want me to go into any further depth than that? Yes, so we are accepting the Anaphylaxis Management Policy Change. We are accepting the change to the extension for the CSBO to have more time to move funds, and we are going to review the time that the public can speak to the board.
Okay, thank you. With that said, our next meeting is Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, seven PM. May I have a motion in a second to go into closed session for the purpose of the Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance or Dismissal of Specific Employees of the Public Body or Legal Counsel for the Public Body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the Public Body or against legal counsel for the Public Body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a Public Body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted at, the next, posted and held in accordance with this Act five Illinois CS one-twenty-two C one. I need a motion.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. It's been a while since I read that. Roll call, please.
Jalowick?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hayde?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes, we are now in closed session. Do you guys want to take a five and then come back, or do you want to power through?
...